I'd like to call this meeting to order. Would you please all rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone here this evening. At this time in our agenda, according to Board Policy 203, we have a 15-minute period of time set aside for citizen input. And we have one person that would like to come forward and speak to the board. Michael Martin.
Dear Board members and superintendent, I am Michael Martin, VFW Post 628 Commander. I represent over 600 Prior Lake residents who are members of our post or auxiliary. We have been an active member of the Prior Lake community since 1946. Over the years, we think we have had a wonderful relationship with the local schools. We have hosted hundreds of fundraisers for student groups through pancake booths and burger bashes. Your bands have participated in Memorial Day ceremonies for years, which we thank you for. We just hosted several bands and their families in our hall last week for a concert. We have given thousands of dollars to school over the years in donations. We just gave $1,000 to the high school for their annual lock-in. We give $5,000 in annual scholarship to Prior Lake students every year. We have student essay contest called Patriots Pen, and the middle school submits 250 entries every year. Each entry is read and scored by our members, and the top ones are awarded a monetary award, and the entries are forwarded to the VFW district for further judging. We've nominated two wonderful teachers for the VFW Teacher of the Year Award. One of them, Nathan Dather, won the State Teacher of the Year Award for middle schools. The VFW has another nationwide oratory contest called Boyce Democracy. The BOD contest has been a VFW program since 1947. And last year, 40,000 students participated nationwide for over $2 million in scholarships. The participation from Prior Lake High was a little underwhelming. We had only two entries. One was a child of one of our members, and the other was homeschooled. My question to you is, how do we get more participation from the high school? Who do I have to contact to get the word out about our contest? How do I get flyers handed out? How do I get on Facebook or the school website, peasants? And how about extra credit assignment for honors class in English? Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Dr. Stallow or Dr. Bezek or both will get back to you with that information. Next on our agenda is roll call. It seems a little backwards. We might want to change that.
That's true.
Everyone is present, with the exception of Julie Sink, Director of Finances. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Michael.
I'd like to make a...
Any comments or questions?
Yes, yes. If we can move an item down to the regular part of the agenda...
You want something pulled off? You consent together?
Yes. The, let's see, under personnel items, candidates for employment.
Number two?
Yes.
Okay. We'll put that under new business then? A1? Any other comments or questions? All those in favor with that addition or change, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. On our consent agenda this evening, these items are routine in nature and will be enacted with one motion with no separate discussion. Our financial statements, check, wire, transfer, disbursement summary, wire transfer, EFT and ACH banking activity, bank reconciliation statement that actually is not on here, will be available in September. The building bond investment reports, monthly wire detail, monthly health dental wire detail, monthly check detail, monthly ACH detail, approval of school board minutes on July 15, 2019. Personnel items, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed, and leaves of absence as listed. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So made.
By Stacy, second.
Second.
By Enrique. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. Next is a resolution for the acceptance of gifts. We have two donors this evening. Prior Lake Cheer donated in memory of Curtis Lemaire, maple tree and planting in the garden area of Prior Lake High School. And the Prior Lake Lions donated backpacks and school supplies for our students in need. Do I have a motion to accept the acceptance of gifts, the resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
So made.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Jonathan, this is a roll call. Michael?
Aye.
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 And that motion carries 7-0. Next on our agenda is Laker pride, recognition, and showcase. I think it's more of a showcase tonight, maybe.
It is. Tonight is more of a Laker showcase. I think the fallacy is that when school and when students leave for the summer, the school and the buildings are quiet, and we don't have a lot of students around. However, tonight we have an opportunity to hear from Carrie Dobie, who is our Community Ed Youth Programs Coordinator, and she's just going to share a little bit of a showcase around some of the summer offerings that we have. So with that, thank you, Carrie, and I'll invite you up.
Thank you. All right. So thank you for the opportunity to celebrate some of our Community Ed Youth programming successes over the summer. I'm Carrie Dobie. I'm the Youth Programs Coordinator for Community Education, and I'm proud to showcase some of our successes from this summer. So, school may have been out, but Prior Lake Savage students and staff were still here, engaged, contributing, and learning. We logged over 19,000 hours of facility use. We were flexible, and the operations team was highly supportive of our programming. For those of you who love numbers, here is a breakdown of who we served or how we served people during the summer. 5,316 participants in about 10 weeks. That is almost 100 more than last year, and we still have at least another week of programming. So tonight, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the youth programs, the programs that fall under my umbrella, the camps and classes, driver's ed, band, and the wave. That's about 51% of our participants. The first one is the music and band program, where we served 409 students. 160 of those students received beginning band lessons, so that was the first time for many of them to pick up an instrument. And we got them ready for 6th grade. They'll start band ready to be successful. We also added some new programming in a chamber ensemble, which was primarily high school students, and also some voice and guitar lessons. All of those were taught by licensed Prior Lake Savage school music teachers. We offered 257 sections of camps and classes, and 93 of those were led by licensed staff. That was 1,824 enrollments. One of the features of our programming this year was camp kindergarten, which is where we got those pictures. But that was Redtail Ridge and Laola Del Lago, five sections serving 70 students. So we got those kids ready for their new routines in kindergarten. The wave is one of my favorites because I think it has the largest impact. It is our middle school program. In the summer, it serves students entering 6th grade through 8th grade, and for many of our students, it's their first glimpse into middle school. Also true for the parents. They're often just as nervous as the students are. Some highlights from this year. The students designed and sold their own T-shirts. They participated with the backyard farm programming and used the vegetables and the produce that they harvested in cooking classes. They went to vertical endeavors where they overcame obstacles and learned they were capable of a lot more than they thought they were capable of. And they made a lot of new friendships. So here is Ada and Tanvi, and they are starting 6th grade with new best friends. So that program served 222 students, an average attendance of about 77 students a day, and that was 31 days of programming and 2,396 attendance days, and still one a week to go. Youth development? This is a big part of my job. Every year, state statute dictates that I write a youth development plan and work on those youth development and youth service pieces. So this year, we made some big improvements to our youth development, and we're really proud of the outcomes. The Wave Cafe was a program that the students started a few years ago, and every year, they have added to it. Now, the students interview to be part of the team. They have training tasks and closing and opening checklist, and they make smoothies and tea and baked goods for the staff and the students in the program. New program, Sam and Sadie, pictured in the middle. They are junior staff that we hired for the first time this year. So they are high school students that worked in the wave for the summer, so they'd be onsite in the mornings, leading groups and developing leadership skills. So we intentionally would pull them out then and do leadership development, which is those two students. I'm going to breathe. The last picture, Peyton and Abby. They are student supports that we hired last fall. They support our camps and classes, and they will be Prior Lake High School seniors this year. So they were also onsite this summer, making sure everything was meeting our expectations. So that was my best attempt at summarizing 10 weeks of programming in five minutes. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, my contact information is here available to you, and I always love feedback. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Carrie.
Could I make a comment?
Yes.
I would just like to thank you and the entire staff for what you did. I have, we all probably know kids who've participated in all levels this summer. I have a son who is one of the new programs, the Chamber Ensemble. And not only did they get together every week and do this, they performed for the community, and they would meet in our basement and do jam sessions outside of that. So what you started was huge. I had kids in band lessons in the stage bandits program at the VFW, nephews and nieces and kids co. in the wave. And I just want to say I'm amazed that you guys are able to facilitate, even in the midst of construction, hitting kids at every end, from our youngest to our seniors, and challenge them in ways that affect them outside and beyond your classes. So just thank you on behalf of all of us.
Thank you. Carrie, great job.
Can we move on to personnel items? Director Jim Queer?
The first 9A under personnel items. The first request is educational support staffing request. And that is an additional soccer coach, which would be booster funded because of the participation rate. There is, what the athletic department feels is the need to add another 9th grade girl soccer coach. And so we are looking for approval of that position.
Do I have a motion to approve an additional 9th grade soccer coach?
So made.
Stacy? Second?
Second.
By Michael. Any comments or questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 7-0.
Second one is, and actually, the substitute teacher wage increase. We did a market analysis of where we were as far as subs. And we were a fair amount below surrounding communities. And as all of us know, subs are hard to come by now, and there's a high demand for that. And as districts around us are all part of the same Teachers on Call thing, they see sub openings in neighboring districts where that didn't used to be the case, right? So I think two things we tried to do as we looked at this. I think we wanted to raise the floor of what a basic sub would make and also encourage subbing more often. So what you see in this proposal that we would like you to consider for approval is that we have a two-tier system. And we raised the basic sub rate from $120 to $130, and then we provide a tier two, and that is for those individuals that have subbed at least the equivalent of 30 days in the previous semester or their retired teacher from the district. There's real value in having your retired teachers come back. They know the district, they know processes, they know buildings. And I think that would be a good thing. So our proposal is to go to a two-tier system, raise the basic daily rate by $10, and then provide a tier two, which would actually be a $15 increase over that. Based upon looking at last year, we would anticipate that would be about a $15,000 increase.
Do I have a motion to approve what Jim has outlined? I won't repeat it. By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Jonathan. Any comments or questions? Mary?
I've got a question. Is that the same regardless of whether they're subbing for grade school, middle school, or high school, the same rate, same everything?
That's correct.
And the only difference between tier one and tier two is the number of hours that they're willing so to encourage the same ones to come back to limit ramp up?
Right. And we would start with last year's second semester and look at that data. So we would have, if you approved tonight, we would have some subs come in at tier two this fall and/or if they're a retired teacher from the district.
We do have a standard requirements list that we send to teachers on call, right, regarding the qualifications for the subject that they're teaching?
Yeah, they would. The state of Minnesota requires you at least have a short call sub license.
Okay. Any other questions?
You mentioned, just, thank you, looking around for the, relative to other districts, nearby districts. Where does this put us now? Where were we? How big was that difference?
We, the HR organization I'm a part of did a sub rate, and they got 40 metro districts that responded. And right now, the mean is $131, right? So the basic rate is still just below the mean, and that tier two would be above it. So, kind of puts us in the middle.
Any other questions? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries 7-0. I guess we could have done the placement before. We'll move on to unfinished business, facilities planning and construction. This is just a report update.
Good evening. Chair Schimmick, School Board, Dr. Stallow. Want to quickly go through some of the updates in construction. A lot of stuff happening out there. This was previously presented at Flurp. Although, we did add a couple of pictures to make sure that you can see that there's really difference going on. Opportunity for a tour on the 26th, board tour. We're very excited about that. With that, I'll begin. So here's Prior Lake High School. That's what the parking lot looked at probably three weeks ago. Lot of earth being moved, lot of utilities being put in. It's been a challenging summer for this work. Another vantage from the roof. You can see here, though, that we're starting to work on the road coming around. It's all storm and sanitary, mostly storm sanitary utilities. A lot of utilities have to go back on this site. Again, it's more roadwork, and they're starting to stack and get their structures in. There's an example of a pipe, storm pipe laid in and backfill. More. Starting to see some footings coming up out of the ground here. This is the front entrance, and currently, it doesn't look much different than this. You can see that we're going to be tying onto the buildings. We're putting piers in and a lot of excavation and backfilling. This is our auxiliary fuel tank for our boilers. We have this so that if utility calls and says you need to switch over to fuel oil, we can do that, and then we get a great rate for gas year-round. There's the tank. We had to make sure that we got fuel in there right away when we were done. Otherwise, and I've seen it before, if we get any kind of water, another thing will pop out like a barber. Again, more work.
Something you wouldn't have thought about, yeah.
This picture was today, so you can see we're actively working. The other challenge with this site was a lot of soil corrections. It was a lot of organic material. You don't find that out until you actually start digging. So there were a few soil corrections on this site. This is the retaining wall. So the parking lot will be at the top of that wall, and then a drive will swing around. And we're actually looking at it from the loading dock here. More forms and footings for the new weight room. And that's the high school. Hamilton Ridge. Again, that was the site. They're starting to stage their topsoil and make their sub cuts. Footings, foundations are going in. It's amazing how fast this one is going up. Lot of good work here. And, yeah. Insulation, and we backfill, and then we start building up. Those are the forms. Hidden Oaks, new fitness room that's by the pool entrance. Really striking building. The architect did a really good job on this one. Getting some pads ready for steps. We'll have an egress for ADA around the side, access and egress. This is the cafeteria addition. So if you remember, the cafeteria was small, and we actually peeled back part of the building and added onto it, and now it's starting to come together. It's further along than this. You can see here's a more current picture. Light panels up along the top and lots of glass. It's really going to be a nice space. The inside of the cafeteria with the stringers and the roof deck, we're actually roofing today. And that's basically the additional cafeteria space for Hidden Oaks, and we're looking both east and south. New servery for Hidden Oaks, too, to kind of open that up and get more kids in and out. Locker rooms. On the left are the old lockers. We added new lockers, and we painted them all the same color to kind of freshen up the space. Here's another shot. This is more current. So really changed, really changed the space. Twin Oaks. This is on the east side of the building. What's, is the expanded cafeteria now. You can see where we got windows going in. Really going to add some nice light there, too. This is the auditorium. We have to add some risers for additional seating. This is a view from the sound booth, interior on the right and exterior on the left. So really changing that space. It's going to be a beautiful auditorium, really, really a good spot. This is the locker rooms and kitchen. You can see there's a lot of utilities underground in these buildings, and not always do we miss them. But that one's coming along good. Again, just the scope of the plumbing. New freezer, excavator on the backside as we start digging footings for the new 10 classroom, Jeff. I think it's 10 that we're adding there at Twin Oaks. And so this is behind Twin Oaks. We got to dig down, put footings in. There is a ton of utilities back there, and you can see how slowly they move in. We have fiber going through there. We have storm, gas, electricity, water. It's a lot, a hydraulic loop that runs through between the buildings. So that goes a little slower, but we're making progress there. You can see that after we get rains, the footings fill up, then we have to pump them out. The workers on the left are tying in a sanitary sewer. Again, step back on the footings because the deeper we go, the further away we have to get so that we don't have a collapse. Again, we're just dealing with a lot of water. See, the windows are taken out for the new classroom, and then that'll wrap around the exterior of the building. More storm work. This is on the side of Twin Oaks, and we used to dump a lot of water, surface runoff, and it would flow down to what is now the ALC. We're putting it in the pipe now, and as part of the ALC site, we have actually water management. So we're not going to flood out ALC, and we're going to control our stormwater. And part of that was the Meadowwacatin grant helped fund that. More of that on the left. In the right is a relocated overhead garage door for the inside maintenance shop. If we look to the south of there, will be the new building. So we had to provide a new way for the workmen to get in and out. Part of that is a turnaround. There's a better picture coming up, but we have some landscaping we had to do to make the turnaround work. That's a big retaining wall with drain tile. And you can see it from here. Shower rooms in Twin Oaks for the new locker room. And you can see we're starting to tile up and finishes. Another example of the locker rooms. This is the cafeteria. So the new, the old kitchen, we took a lot of that out, reconfigured it, and added the dishroom now that you're going to see there on that wall. And really another striking, a striking space. It's going to be beautiful with the extra light in there. Westwood Edgewood. Again, a feature of all our designs, it's more light and daylighting and collaboration. And that's what this space is, is the former multipurpose room. So the original lunchroom of that building. And you can see the work that went in. And you can see we're starting to put the finishes in, windows and doors, and toothing in the exterior brick. It's the exterior of the link at Westwood and Edgewood. Again, storefront going in. That one's coming together, too, and that also is a beautiful space. Lot of light. Interior Westwood, lot of casework and demo and building. We're starting to get there. Bathroom at the new multipurpose room or lunchroom at Westwood and Edgewood. This is behind Edgewood. We have to tie in sanitary there, and that's the big part of this project. And then we're also trying to improve drainage while we're back here. So I don't know if you remember or not, but there's a pretty steep hill to the north of the site. We kind of took that away so we could get down to the sanitary to hook up. And we're trying to figure out a way to make that a little easier to manage our water, surface water. Jeffers Pond and Redtail. Again, that was before. Now, they're grouted. The bathrooms are, those are just about done, those two sites. And they're really nice spaces again. Some of the casework. And here's the finished room. And I believe this one is Redtail. So a lot of LVT, but some soft seating for the kids to sit on and with a presentation board, I think, on that wall, too. So more updated the space, and it's comfortable and attractive. Again, another view. Bridge is ALC. It's been a long time since it looked like that, at least it seems that way to me. It's, this one's coming along pretty good. We had Dave Brown and some of his staff tour today, and they are really, really pleased with how that turned out. Again, some of the hard work going on, the polishing... Again, some of the hard work going on, we're polishing concrete. We have a better idea of what that's going to look like when we're done. We're starting the carpet in there now, the ceilings are going in, the polish is virtually done, maybe a little bit more. Really a nice space. Gives you an idea. That's looking from the double doors by the main office. New warming kitchen for Bridges with some of the equipment. I think that's it. And so one challenge we are having is at the high school parking lot. I'm working with Dr. Bezek and Jeff. We're trying to, probably not going to be ready for the main lot. We do have Plan B though, to get staff in and seniors. So it's a little challenging. Weather's been really difficult this summer, really difficult. Am I missing anything, Jeff?
I think as far as the parking lot is concerned, I think, you know, certainly students carpooling, using district bus.
Yep, that would be a part of it.
Will alleviate some of the, some of the traffic concerns, you know, just as we get through the first couple of weeks of school. I think, as you can see, there's a tremendous amount of dirt being moved and a lot of things that are in progress. I think the main thing that we're looking at is, is, you know, the building has to be usable. There's going to be students and staff there.
Correct.
And so there, we have to get the building to a place where, you know, can normally run as a school while the construction can continue to take place. And that parking lot is, it's an important piece and some of the weather challenges have sort of compromised a little bit, but again, just maybe asking a little bit for our high school families' patience as we get through these first couple of weeks and try to limit the amount of cars coming there and we'll have that tied up pretty quickly in September.
Correct. Yeah, we just need a, hopefully only need a couple of weeks and we're working on communication and our goal is occupancy now. We're not going to have everything done, we know that now, but we will be ready for business.
Any questions? Melissa?
You mentioned communications. We're what, two and a half weeks out? Should we be having some sort of a formal communication with our junior, sophomore, freshman families?
Yep, I'm working with Dr. Bezek on that. Yep, that's, we understand that that's key and we tried to hold off as long as we could because there's still a chance we may make it, but it's not looking good.
You know, when we were at the FLIRP meeting last week, occupancy permit with ALC was still on track, right?
Yes.
What about the parking lot, given the amount of rain we've had?
At ALC?
Yes.
No problem.
No problem, we're still going to get that in?
They're putting base down, starting curbs tomorrow. We should have no issue there.
Okay, so the rain had not inhibited anything?
No, we took care of a lot of the surface runoff and it went through the new system and it was really good.
Good.
It's still wet down there, but not.
I drove by it, it looked pretty darn wet, actually.
Yeah. Well, we had to pull soils out of there too, we found that out. Yeah.
John, did you have a comment to make about parking?
You know, we, at the timeframe that we normally.
Did you come up to the mic? Thank you. Oh, forgot, they don't have a mic.
Here, choose this one right here. I warmed it up for you.
We're right at the timeframe that we normally start reviewing parking permits and all that. We've kind of got a stage letter. We've been watching this going on and my line to people has been, nobody's told me that we're not going to be ready, so we might be a little delayed on the parking lot, but we can just kind of scale the delivery of permits. So we've got a letter that we're, we're working on that kind of, that says the staff lot's going to be delayed a little bit and we'll release more permits once the lot is done. So we're thinking it might be, you know, maybe a week, maybe two. So we'll work on that and we'll make it work. You know, be an inconvenience, but it's nothing that we can't overcome. You know, we have ways for kids to get to school. There's not a constitutional right to drive a car to school. I know people are excited to drive and all of that, but again, we'll make that, we'll make that work.
Thank you.
Excuse me, John, really quick, what about the kids who purchase parking permits? Are we going to, I mean, already paid for them, is there?
Nobody's paid for a permit yet.
Nobody's paid for it, so it's online.
It's this time of year that we are just starting to review, so we may be, you know, with the weeks, school's starting a week earlier, we're a little pressed for time, but we've been getting ready to send that letter out. Kids have already applied, but we haven't awarded anybody. So we'll go through our application process and we'll get the kids that need one for, let's say, the kids that go to MinCaps and the kids that need to drive a car because they have no other way to get to those programs. So we'll get those in and then we'll, most likely, what I would think we would do is give seniors the first crack and then we'd say, you know, underclassmen, we'll let you wait a week here, a week or two at the most. We'll see what, and hey, there may be a chance that we make it on time, but you know, we want to be prepared in case we're not.
Okay, well, thank you for prioritizing the MinCaps kids too, because they do need a car right away.
Oh, definitely.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Jim?
Thank you.
It's still exciting.
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Moving into new business, I had moved the candidates for employment to this, at this point and before I take a motion, Melissa, you had asked for that. So I'll let you speak.
Yeah, I had a question on support staff. There were a few there. The one that I had the question on, it's not very often that we have with a position replacing two other employees that are current employees. This is the one for Cheryl Haugen. And if you could give us a little bit more background there?
Sure. So what you're talking about is the enrollment secretary position, which was created months ago. We had two people who shared the position when it was the receptionist position out front, changed to enrollment position. They filled that and as we've had a chance to reflect on the process and what we do, we felt it was in the best interest of the district to have one full-time position occupied by one person because it's one deep and the level of knowledge in working with Mars and the business office, there was a feeling that that needed to take place. So we opened that position up and interviewed for it and hired somebody. So it was two part-time positions that were shared. We made that a one-deep position, full-time position.
Okay. It says replacing the current employees are Dee Schuman and Kay Rusnick.
Yes.
And they're being replaced by, I guess the background, this person had been, got about four years of experience, it looks like, but is there a difference, a delta in the benefits as well, now that it's full-time? So the other, the old employees, did they get any benefits?
It's the, well, it's the same position, the rate of pay, I'm not sure what versus what the two that are in there now versus the person moving over there, if it's the exact same rate of pay, but it's a position within the bargaining unit. So whatever the benefits and the pay prescribed by the contract, that's what it would be.
Okay.
I can sure find out the difference between the current rate, because the person has some experience in the district and so that obviously makes a difference as to what step they're on.
So did, so those Dee Schuman and Kay Rusnick, are they no longer with us?
They're still working yet. We just, this person just started, they're in the back with Mars Coordinator, learning that side of the program and then September 1st will be the switch over.
Oh, okay. Just surprised that they, I mean, did they have to apply for, did they apply for the job or?
They had the, they had the right to apply for it if they wanted to. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the candidates for employment?
Tell me.
By Stacy, second?
Second.
By Enrique. Any other comments or questions? Being none, although in favor, say aye.
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 Posed?
Nay.
That motion carries six, one. Move on to the summer program report. Director of Support Services, Anderson.
All right. Good evening, Chair Schimmick, members of the board and Dr. Stallow. I'm here this evening to just give you a brief overview of summer programming E through grade eight that comes out of the Student Support Services Department. Two programs that I'm going to talk about for, very briefly, are extended school year and targeted services. So extended school year is a component that, it's a required component that comes out of special education and it's only for students who qualify and it's really an extension of the school year. So we work really hard with parents not to call it summer school because it truly is an extension of a student's school year and students have to qualify that, qualify for that programming. It's either based on regression, recoupment. So how far a student regresses and how long it takes them to recoup the skills that they lost during a specific time period. Self-sufficiency or unique need. So this year, we had 47 students, E through 12, that attended. ESY, this year, we tried something new. Typically, ESY is done in July and this year we decided to do it in June. So we had programming from June 10th to June 27th. Half-day programming, Monday through Thursday in the morning. And the sites we use, we were able to use all of our own sites, which was great too. So we had early childhood programming at early childhood. We used grain wood as a site, Redtail Ridge, and then the high school as well. So we had our middle schoolers attend at the high school. So that's briefly just kind of what ESY looks like for the district. So there aren't a lot of students that qualify for ESY services considering we probably have 1,100 students who receive special education services, so it's a very small percentage of students who qualify for extending their school year. And it's taught by all of our own staff as well. Targeted services is a little bit different. The district is eligible for targeted services funding based, because we have an ALC. So districts who have an alternative learning center qualify for targeted services funding. And this year, our summer programming was, and it's always for K through eight students who are at risk. And there are 13 different categories that students can qualify in. The majority of our students who participate qualify because they're not making the progress we would like to see them make toward grade level standards. Some of them, it's because of attendance. Some of them, they automatically qualify if they receive special education services or if they're English language learners. So that's the majority of the students in our district who qualify. The goal of the programming is not to repeat exactly what you do in the summer. So we don't want to bring kids in and do math worksheets, reading worksheets and kind of a repeat because it doesn't make a whole lot of sense to do the same thing you did during the school year, right? So this, the goal of the program then is to address those academic issues and the social-emotional components a little bit differently. So this year, both the middle schools come together and it's one targeted services sites, or site at Hidden Oaks. And there were 140 students who participated and they did a very different approach, which was extremely successful. What they did was more of an interdisciplinary approach. So what that looked like was they did a cooking theme and they talked about math and reading throughout that cooking theme. They did a fitness theme as well and again, incorporating math and reading and that social-emotional piece during that fitness piece, just so that, to mix it up a little bit, as I said before. So this year, it was also this year, multi-grade level. So fifth and sixth graders were together and this was the first year we've had fifth graders attend the middle school programming. And then seventh and eighth grade were together as well. The new approach that was used by the staff there was very well received by both students and parents. We heard really good feedback. Elementary-wise, our program, and all of this primarily occurred between, after the Fourth of July and our last date was last Friday, or Thursday, I should say. So elementary, in order to accommodate more students, we offered our programming at sites that had kids company at those sites as well because it was an easy way to target groups of students and because we do not provide transportation. We don't have the money to pay for transportation out of, it isn't self-sustaining in the targeted services budget. So at elementary, we had 321 students participate at three sites, Glendale, Redtail and JP. And so you can tell we had different sites. Then we tried to put ESY at one site, targeted services at another for the most part. We also do a parent survey at the end. So that parent survey, keep in mind, just went out last week. Of those that have already, we've already started getting them back, have been for the most part positive. We hear the most about the fact that we don't provide transportation. And so that's the downside for parents, which is why we really try hard to locate it at the site where Kids Co is. So in terms of what we're looking at for the future, we've been doing some chatting about how we can look at MTSS and supporting students during the school year as well, whether that is before or after-school targeted services or even moving some of our targeted services potentially out to a church site or someplace where there is a cluster of students that are very close by that also qualify and need those targeted services. Because the intent is really to keep kids from dropping out of school. And I know that sounds harsh when we're talking about elementary students, we're worried about them dropping out, but that is the intent behind the targeted services funding. So it's a great opportunity for us as a district to provide, because we do qualify for those funds. It's just a great opportunity for us as a district to capture. We get about, I believe it's close to, when I was looking at, it's like $5 per hour per student who participates and it's all based on attendance. So if students don't come, we don't get the money. So we really want to work hard to make it enticing so kids want to come and accessible to students as well. So that's just a really brief snippet. Any questions you have about it?
Any questions from the board? Mary?
Now, I know there's summer school in general for kids, right? How is, how is this different?
We call it summer school. It isn't. We have two options for families and that's why it's confusing.
Right.
When we talk about it. We call, we are using targeted services funds to offer summer school and that's a really good clarification. So when we, when we send out the information to parents, we talk about summer school. When we send out for special education, we talk about extended school year because it is, it does get confusing.
In targeted services, AKA summer school, that's what most parents.
Know it is.
Call it. Know it is.
Correct.
Now, if a student, let's say, didn't get their work done during the year and all this kind of stuff, how are they actually rectifying that with the work being done over the summer, given that you are doing it in a different, more socially and emotionally, you know, area? But how does that actually normalize going into the following school year?
Each student who qualifies and participates in that programming summer school, targeted slash targeted services, each student has what's called a continuous learning plan where we set goals and objectives. So it's not as intense as an individualized education plan, but teachers can check what area student need, students need to work on and then we write goals and objectives under those and parents have to sign off on that as well. So they, and then we have to report end of year progress or end of summer progress on there to see. So that's one way of, you know, when a classroom teacher says, I'm referring this student to targeted services, here are the areas, that's how we don't lose that.
Okay, good. Any other questions?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next on our agenda is the budget and enrollment. First topic is the approval of the 2019-20 budget calendar.
Sure.
Just doing that one, okay.
Good evening, Chair Schimmick, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. As indicated in your agenda, Dr. Stallow and I will be presenting these next three topics as Julie Sink is off this evening. So we'll start with the 1920 school budget. So we'll start with the nineteen-twenty school budget, or budget calendar. This is a very consistent document that is brought to you annually that forecasts all of the different times that we're talking about, budget over the course of the school year. There's a couple of things I do want to highlight here. You may recall several times Julie talking about a budget calendar, and we're actually operating within three, three years or three school years. And I want to point out or highlight a couple of things. This fall, you'll be getting an update on the eighteen-nineteen audit, so a review of last year. And then you'll simultaneously be leading up to the levy certification for nineteen-twenty, which will start in September, with the preliminary levy being set at the September twenty-third session. With ultimately, which is the second topic in your agenda, setting December ninth as the levy certification approval board meeting. And then from there, we're going into, we roll into the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one budget parameter, enrollment, and setting the budget for next year. And so again, it's going from one to the current to the future. You kind of see how everything is sort of captured here with this document. So with that, I'd like to, we're seeking board approval on this calendar. As you can see, budget enrollment will be a monthly topic at both the regular meetings and the, and the work sessions moving forward.
Do I have a motion to approve the budget calendar for twenty nineteen-twenty?
So moved.
Second. By Jonathan, second by Stacy. Any comments or questions? Mary?
Question. The vote on open enrollment has traditionally occurred in January, and that puts us behind other school districts who usually approve theirs August the year before, so people know when to apply, et cetera. Are we, I don't see a specific line item here for this. How is that going to occur this year?
So in the, I believe last year, the board set open enrollment in December because I know the year prior, it was January, and that was right up against kindergarten registration where we did catch some families off guard. So I believe, if memory serves me correctly, and I'll verify that. But I believe last year, we had discussions with the board in October, November, with, with it set in December. And so we were a little earlier. That seemed to, to give adequate time, you know, for number one, communicating with families and then allowing the time for the board to have dialogue about open enrollment, open enrollment parameters. Once that's set, then that gets set into the parameters moving forward. Right now, we're operating with what the board-approved parameters are, which is that seventy-five at kindergarten and one percent at each grade level. And so that's the assumption as administration we're taking as we look at our budget assumptions moving forward. And pending conversations from the board and, and other revenue sources are looking at open enrollment as those assessments or assumptions or direction is given to, to administration, then we'll update our assumptions and, and factor that into our, our budget and, our budget scenarios moving forward. But right now, we're operating with the one percent in grades one through twelve and seventy-five at kindergarten.
And I would like to, I will be asking for a discussion on the next study session. There's a lot of schools that close the registration in mid-January and, and then announce who gets in, you know, February and March, that sort of thing, based upon their waiting list, and we don't open it until then. And some parents in our district and outside districts have questioned that process and want to plan ahead for the following year. So we tend to be a little bit late in the process.
Questions? Comments?
No.
Okay. This does require board action. And I have a motion in a second, I believe. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero.
And then if you would, I've already highlighted, if you would take action on December ninth as the levy certification date.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the levy certification date for Monday, December ninth at seven PM that will be at the beginning of our regular meeting?
So made.
By Mary, second.
Second.
By Melissa. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? That motion carries seven-zero. Enrollment update.
Excellent. Good evening, board members. We always, at this time of the year, we try to ensure that our board members are aware of where we currently are with our enrollment numbers against the projections that we had. Things change incredibly rapidly in August. I know there was one date last week where I think we enrolled twelve students and we lost eleven students. So we're having a lot of things that are happening, so we thought it was very important that we were able to inform you about where we are right now. So we wanted to provide the breakdown that's in front of you, and we will continue to monitor that. As you can see right now, we are about ninety students district-wide short of what our budgeted number is. This is trending a little bit lower than our historic numbers have been at this time of the year. We'll continue to watch and monitor that and see what happens. You know, we always throughout, you know, between now and October first, we gain kids, we lose kids, but we did want you to be aware that at this point, we are about ninety students short of what was projected. You can see that breakdown. The most number short at the elementary right now, also short a bit at the, at the middle school, and then above of projections, a bit at the high school. So we wanted to be sure that you saw that and were aware of that. We'll continue to bring those numbers to you at the study session on August twenty-sixth. We'll bring those to you as well. And then the second thing that I wanted to just highlight, I was wondering if there might be a question, so we wanted to just make sure that we did provide you an opportunity to see where we are right now with that one percent of open enrollment available by grade level. You can see that on the chart, there's some grade levels that have, that we have waiting lists for at this point and some that we don't, but wanted to give you an opportunity to view that as well.
Have any comments? Melissa?
First, going back to the other chart, the enrollment totals, I was noticing for the fifth grade, the difference between, let's see, there's a ten-student difference in fifth grade between Westwood at twenty-two students and Grainwood with thirty-two. Is that accurate, if I'm looking at it correctly?
Yep, it is, Melissa.
That can make a big difference. Is there anything that we are doing to-
Yeah, we're, we're monitoring, as I'm looking at Jim and Jeff, I know they spent time last Friday and maybe even today, again, with elementary principals. So I'll let one of you speak to some of the conversations that you have and the things you're looking at.
Yeah, we had, I met with the elementary principals last Friday, and we're just look, we're brainstorming on different ideas that we might be able to do to reduce the student-to-teacher ratio, particularly in a couple of hotspots that we have. And nothing definitive yet, but I think we have some things that could work. We realize that there, you know, that's a fairly decent disparity between buildings, and it's our intent to hopefully level that out or at least provide Patrick with some support if necessary in fifth grade. So that, that is an accurate number of, to one, one teacher to thirty-two students. Nothing definitive yet, but we are having the conversations, and I think we got some pretty decent ideas, and we floated some more around today between Jeff and Dr. Stallow and myself as well, so.
Yeah, I see Edgewood, same thing with fourth grade. Edgewood, nineteen students, and Glendale, twenty-eight. We've got some big swings.
Yeah, you know, ideally, as we look at our staffing ratios, it would be great if all of the homes at all of the grade levels came out evenly, but, you know, that's not the case. And again, we want to be sure that we provide the support needed. You know, I think, I think if we talk to our teachers and look at trends, there's years that they've got more students, years that they're lower, but it certainly is when there's that much of a difference in swing, something we need to take a look at. Thanks.
Stacy?
Redtail, is there, we're using every classroom? Or is there a space?
Yes, Redtail, we're using every classroom, and then we'll have those two additional classrooms available at Redtail.
Right, but I just, we don't have any-
We have a music, we have a music room now, we have an art room now. We're back to where the building-
Okay, so we are, so spaces are doing what they were supposed to dedicate to.
Correct.
Okay. And so every classroom's filled of regular classrooms. Okay.
I guess I have a little bit of concern with the budget enrollment being down, and then we have a waitlist at the same time. So it's a little confusing as to how that looks. And, and I believe it probably has more to do with the one percent per grade level. Is it possible to go with one percent per school or per, per level, as in like the high school and the elementary or the middle schools?
So when, looking at, at statute, I mean, right now, we, the board is, has limited one percent at each grade level.
Right.
The board can also close certain sites if it's over capacity, so you can make those decisions by site. You could also adjust based on if you have additional capacity that's available, too. And so, I mean, as we, you've had that conversation, and we've talked about the numbers coming forward, that, that's been really through the process of looking at the number of students coming at kindergarten, talking about seventy-five, and then that one percent. And again, I know, as, as we look at this, these are, where we have waitlists are typically where we've historically seen waitlists for students. Kindergarten, we normally always have a waitlist of, of families and parents wanting to come into the district. And then you all, we also see it either as sixth grade, eighth, and then also ninth. And so, you know, kid, you know, coming into, at the secondary level, in some ways, we've, you know, Prior League Savage has been, in, in many cases, that second or third home for families, and so students are coming in a little older. And so that, that may be a trend that we're continuing to see with these numbers here. But as you look at, looking at open enrollment, we, you know, as a board, you have the ability to have that conversation around where you want to set based on the, the amount of available space or what the enrollment that, that you're, that as a board and as a district, we're looking to capture.
I think it's important as a board, and maybe I'm going along a little bit with what you're referring to, Mary, I'm not sure, but we do need to talk about open enrollment and how we, how we are addressing that, especially if our numbers are low. The other thing that makes me wonder about the high school is I'm, I have the understanding that we'll have more classroom space available by mid-year.
Correct.
So we have these ninth graders waiting to come in, and basically, they're six months too early or five months too early where we would have space for them. And I just, I guess I just feel like we need to, to be fiscally responsible as well as responsible to the parents of kids that have been in our district, and now we're telling them they can't, they can't come to the high school, to have that discussion. And we can't start soon enough to have it, I don't believe. So as a board, I think it's something that is important for us to be looking at.
And, you know, and looking at the numbers, we're right on target with what the state, the county, and everything demographic said. We do have a district where we bubble in third through fifth grade and then sixth grade. And we are seeing the bubble in high school, but there was a prediction that between twenty-twenty and twenty-twenty-five, eighteen and younger is going to flatten out or drop. And so we are seeing that. We're seeing, I mean, in the O E last year, we did see less kids also in our surrounding districts. But we did see, what, a twenty-two and a thirty-eight kid jump in high school? And we saw, and every year, we see a bubble that comes in. So when we front-load kindergarten, we usually pay for it with overcrowding later on, and then we run into the struggle. And so right now, I'm, I'm seeing it right on track because I'm, I'm looking at my own spreadsheets from twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, all the way through twenty-twenty. And I did have one question that I did ask Dr. Stallow beforehand, and I understand that Julie isn't here, so we're not going to get an answer on it, but we, we budgeted only sixty-eight kids in ECSC for, for Edgewood. And Edgewood, of course, is packed to the gills. And we saw a hundred and forty, which is not unusual. We had a hundred and thirty last year, we had a hundred and forty-three in twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, looking at all the numbers that have come through. So I think our biggest issue is we don't have it evened out, as been pointed out between the, the grade schools, and we do need to prepare for, for the bubbles that occur and giving the students, particularly this year, a break. But, you know, my, my, my biggest concern is long-term capacity planning and the fact that other districts close registrations for open enrollment somewhere around January fifteenth. And we're deciding on it and voting on it in December. So in order for families to have the most options, I do think we need to start making those decisions and doing a little bit more long-term capacity planning with this and rather, rather than voting, you know, going into the next year right away.
I'd be interested in hearing which districts are closing open enrollment registrations by mid-January, because if there's some strategy they're using, it would be important maybe for us to do a little behind-the-scenes work to understand really how they're doing some of that capacity planning and how they're using that factoring into their, their budget. I mean, as a board, if that's a conversation you'd like to have, I think it'd be worthwhile to see what the, you know, the methodology behind, what that is. I mean, I, I believe we've allowed, we've allowed parents to, to apply for open enrollment at any time during the year. And I know we have internal timelines for when we're accepting and then when we start to place, and then we accept again and place, and then balancing that with in-district transfers. Parents are looking for different requests or different schools at the elementary level. And so that will all come full circle again this fall as we, you know, with more space coming online at, at all of our buildings and then in particular for next year with the change of elementary boundaries and in-district transfer and open enrollment assignment and things like that. So we're really, this is, this would be a very good time to see if there are other districts that are out there doing some of these strategies, please send them along to either Julie or myself or Dr. Stallow. And, and then we can kind of look into that so that we can help construct that, the framework so that you as a board can have that conversation.
Right, well, likewise, that, Edina, Minnetonka, Richfield, Bloomington, they usually vote on next year's capacity, and then what they do is they ask for all registrations and records to be transferred by mid-January. And then if they still have openings, they announce, but normally, they try to make decisions by then. So that's all I'm saying, is there's, there's, are others, and I know that given our, our delay, we have a lot of parents that work across the river and don't want to get, you know, they, they want to make, they want to plan ahead for the following year. Also, people who are moving into the district are deciding if they're going to, you know, that sort of thing, given the economic stuff and the higher-priced homes in our, in our area. It would be nice to have a long-term capacity plan that we can kind of base on and give them a heads up.
Well, we'll certainly, I think what will be different moving forward is we'll definitely have capacity in, in, in many of our buildings with, with completing the, the educational spaces for the referendum. And so it, it, you know, as a board, you'll be able to really, I think, engage and have a good conversation, because I know in the past, it's been tight, capacity's been tight. And so, you know, which does lead to overcrowding. And so being able to, to have more educational spaces, looking at our, at our community growth, and then also looking at, you know, what does that look like from a short and long-term financial projection and building stability within enrollment? You know, Dr. Stallow, I know you and I were talking about this the other day. I think obviously bringing that online and resetting the district with elementary boundaries, looking at housing trends, you know, we're not done. I mean, we, we really have to, have to, you know, we have to go back to, to looking at the, the community projections again and looking at our demographics, yes.
I, I think that that's kind of an ongoing discussion, though, because there are ups and downs, and we don't know all the people moving in all the time. So it's something that we need to not just start talking about in the summer or in the fall or have something decided by October. I think it's something that has to be done on a regular basis. And, and so I'm, I'm kind of trying to encourage us that we, we do look at that on a more regular basis. We can make a decision now, but it might be the wrong decision depending on what's changing with people moving in. You know, some people don't know they're going to be here yet. It's August. They're going to show up, you know, the first day of school and want to be here, and we don't know about them, and they live here. We need to take them. So we, there are some variables, but it's always changing. So we need to be flexible to that, I think, and keep that conversation going all the time.
And we also need to plan for the fact that, you know, the, the changes in demographics are not linear. We don't just grow one or two percent every year. We're going to have dips, and we need to keep that strategic capacity line understandable so that we can plan for those.
And parents have choice.
Yeah, exactly.
They have choice to where, where they want to send their kids and when they want to send their kids.
Yep.
You know, there may be kids, parents that are holding their kids- You know, there may be kids, parents that are holding their kids this year that we were expecting to be coming. And they may change their mind. Jonathan?
Couple of items, I'll just reiterate, I think it is important. We've been talking about even from a budgetary standpoint, looking more longer term and, and trying to be a little bit more strategic. And I think that a capacity plan fits right in with that mode of planning and thinking and being a little bit longer, long, you know, just looking further into the future with all of these things. If we had, if we have a long-term capacity plan on an annual basis, we have some sort of benchmarks on which we are basing our decisions as opposed to year by year saying, oh, we've got some space this year. Let's go open up for some more kids or we're a little tight. So I think it'll, when we go through that process and have something in place, I think it will help us every year when we're making those choices. I'm, I'm curious, 90 seems like a larger number that we've been short in terms of budget at this point in the past. But I wasn't here. I know we add through, past few years, we've added throughout the year, and August, we tend to add. Do you have a sense of where, how this compares to the past couple of years in terms of how short we are?
You know, I, I wouldn't venture, I mean, Julie would be.
Okay, I know Julie would be.
I just know that the next two to three weeks, these numbers will change a lot.
And we, and we do know, I mean, I think about this from a budget perspective. I mean, this adds up to a big number if we indeed wind up with 70, 80, 90 fewer students than what we had budgeted for. Just our per pupil number is six, is 67?
64.
64?
Yeah, on the basic formula.
On the basic formula.
And then we have other categorical aid, but yeah.
I should have those numbers committed to memory by now, sorry.
64, 38.
64, 38. You know, I, I think the upside is, you know, we, this is why we have a fund balance for things like this. And we had, we had made a commitment of sort of earmarking some of that fund balance for construction overruns that we now look like we might not have. So I feel better about where we're going to be if we do have, if we do have to go in there a bit. But I do think in the long run, what's, you know, what's best for our students and, and our community? And if, if the budgetary, when, when this becomes a problem to me is when the budget impacts are us having to have conversations about what needs to go. And I don't think we're at that spot, but that's when, that's when I'm concerned.
I have the numbers in front of me. We're 18 under for the year if you include ECSC and we're 90 under so far. But last year, we had almost a 40 kid plus and minus swing in the first month. So there was, you know, and.
Big change.
Yeah, and we were at 632 total with 77 open enrolled last year, according to MDE. It's all online. And so, yeah, there's, there's, we're, we, like I said, we're, it, it goes like this. And that's going to happen, but we do have to have that capacity. We should have had a capacity plan by grade every year before this and we haven't. It's always seems to be like a last minute type of thing, like, okay, we think we're going to grow by a certain percentage. So we budget to that. But now we are going to start flattening out a little bit and we need to plan ahead a lot. And, you know, it, it goes backwards and forwards all the time here.
It does, but I know that, you know, a lot of this information is based on historical numbers that have happened in the district. It's not just kind of a guessing game.
No, I, that's why, that's why, that's why I said, we, we, we've been doing this kind of thing with, we're going to grow a certain percentage. And, and it's never linear. It never really works out that way. It's always a graph that does this, you know, I mean, and, and planning forward and not, not doing the put your foot on the brake, put your foot on the gas each year and understanding where we're heading to kind of helps too.
I guess I don't feel that we're doing that, but okay.
I think, I think our, I think we were off six students last year's, on last year's budget. So I think the, the projections, you know, and who knows, this might just be a, a trend or in a month from now, two weeks from now, we might be in a very different place. Our goal tonight was to make sure that the board was updated with where we are today, making you aware that we are trending lower than we have in the past. And we're going to watch it and monitor it really carefully. We'll be sure to come back to you with, with an update on the 26th and make sure that we do continue to forecast and, and to look at long-range modeling. We're hearing that both from a budget and enrollment perspective and we'll continue to work on that.
No, I, I think, you know, just, you captured it perfectly, Dr. Stallow, is just as part of the budget conversations, these are going to be things that we're going to be bringing forward. And I think having just open dialogue, you know, I, as you pointed out, the 90 students that we appear to be down is not any, is not, is not consistent with, with what we've seen historically. So I don't know if this is an anomaly, but I know over the past, every year I've been in the district, we've increased students. And so that, that is a consistent, you know, how much and where and which grade level, you know, that can, that can adjust. But I know as we look forward multiple years out, you know, the, the amount of capacity we have may be too little. And so, you know, I know, Dr. Stallow, you've mentioned a couple of times that as we've completed Hamilton Ridge and we're looking long-term, we may, we need to evaluate our needs of maybe additional schools should the community continue to grow at similar rates.
I, I just want to clear, clarify one item that you just said. Our, our 90 is, is potential little shortage of what we have budgeted. It's still an increase.
Correct.
Right, we're still, we're still up.
Yeah.
We're, we're still plus in students, but it's not to where we forecasted our budget.
We're just not growing.
Correct.
Same pace.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be back in two weeks.
Move on to, oh, policy, we have none. That's unusual. I'm sure there's more to come.
Yes.
Move on to administrative reports, Dr. Stallow.
Thank you very much. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. Our collective mission and work is focused on that. And tonight, I just want to update you on a couple really exciting things. We are definitely in the thick of back-to-school preparations. All departments and buildings have been busy getting ready for students and staff to start the 2019-20 school year. Last week, the Minnesota Department of Education partnered with the Minnesota Association for School Administrators to kick off the year. On Tuesday, Jim Corm and I had an opportunity to attend that workshop. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, we held our administrative retreat all day on Wednesday. And then on Thursday, 140 staff members and administrators had their building instructional leadership team retreat on Thursday. The purpose of all those events is for staff to meet to ensure that strategies and action plans are in motion to meet school and district goals. This morning, we had the opportunity to greet 35 new teachers who are joining our district this year. They're beginning their orientation to the district, which included a tour of the school district in partnership with staff and leaders from the city of Prior Lake and the city of Savage. Department leaders have also been heavily planning as we open the year in just a couple of weeks for all of our students. I did want to just follow up with Jim's presentation on construction. You know, he spoke a little bit of, of some of the challenges. And as you look at the scope of projects that have happened this summer, I just again want to give kudos to Jim and Maureen and their staff, to Jeff and Julie, to our building principals. You heard from Carrie tonight, the flexibility that, that our summer programming needed to have. It really has been an unbelievable collaborative effort. And people have been flexible and have worked and gone out of their way to do some workarounds. And, and I know all of our buildings are impacted. I could not be more proud of how this work is progressing, of how folks are rolling up their sleeves and getting to work. And, you know, if, if the challenge that we have is the parking lot right now, we're going to be okay when you look at the scope of that work that's happening across the district. So I just wanted to give a kudos to folks, it's been a lot of work. And then one last thing. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools has been named one of the best school districts in Minnesota by NIECH, coming in at eighth out of 400, 342 public school districts. This is a rise from the ranking from last year where we came in at 14th and we ranked 15th best school district in 2017. Of districts with the best teachers in Minnesota, we came in at number third in the state. Prior Lake Savage Area Schools earned top grades in academics, teachers, college readiness, health and safety, and clubs and activities. The 2020 best school districts ranking is based on an analysis of key statistics and millions of reviews from students and parents using data from the United States Department of Education. Rankings include factors such as state, state test scores, college readiness, graduation rates, SAT, ACT scores, teacher quality, public school district ratings, and more. A great school district is not the result of any one thing, but instead, it is a collective effort of many individuals over time. I couldn't be more proud of all who have contributed in the past and who continue to contribute to the excellence and opportunities for students at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I'm confident that we have another amazing year in front of us. And lastly, just to give another little shout out to our assistant superintendent, Jeff Holmberg, who is with us on his birthday this evening.
29.
Thank you. Are there any administrative reports? Okay, any board reports? Go ahead, Michael.
I will let other board members report on MSBA conference that several of us attended along with Dr. Stallow. I did go to the evening session the night before, which was about diversity in our schools by Bukata Hayes, who's the director of the Greater Mankato Diversity Council. And it was an incredible session. And if it's offered again, I would really recommend it. And also, we'll pass along the contact information for Bukata Hayes. He's a great local resource. I know that we also have some more national leadership in the diversity area, but it was just a very rich experience and someone who'd be close at hand if we need resources as well, so.
Highlights for me from MSBA, MSBA, M A S B, whatever.
Summer seminar for school.
Thank you. About a half a box of Kleenex as we went through, as we watched the Lucy Laney documentary. It was quite a, quite a moving, quite a moving documentary. And visiting with the assistant and now principal and reporter that did the work afterward was really interesting. My, the other highlight for me was the discussion from the state demographer who was there. I love numbers, people with a sense of humor. And she certainly was that. But for those who don't know, in the 1990s, every year, we added as a state 54,000 net new workers to the workforce. In 2020, we're going to add 7,000 net new workers to the workforce. We have 140,000 open jobs and 80,000 people looking for work. And so the math there, her, her message was mathematically, we may need some new people here to keep us having a, 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 economic vitality that we have. And then I had an opportunity to have a conversation with one of our middle school teachers a couple of weeks ago, met at Boathouse Brothers with Melanie Bodomiller, who just wanted to tell me a little bit about the sale program at the middle schools, which I wasn't familiar with, helping us equip kids who, for the non, non-special ed kids who have some level of challenge somewhere in their lives that's affecting their ability to perform in school, could be any number of different reasons. And teaching what she called executive, executive functioning skills, time management, organization, helping kids, and, and along the lines, staying with the theme of relationships matter, making some connections with people in the buildings. And she wanted us to just be aware of that program and she appreciates that it's there. And as we're talking more about socially emotional learning, things like that, we need to continue to support.
Stacy? Nothing for me. Mary?
Well, over the summer, some of the MNCAP's mentees that I had were quite busy. One in particular, Brittany Tassi, joined the Avid program and the National Black Student Union for the, for the accounting. And she walked away with the Cargill Team Championship for their simulated Shark Tank. So they won and she got the individual Ernst &amp; Young College Scholarship for Best Entrepreneur and Accounting. So that was pretty, that was pretty impressive. And I'm very, very proud of those girls, every one of them who, who joined in. So it's just a little bit of a heads off, hats off to our MNCAP's programs and how much they prepared these students. Then I did go to the MSBA Summer Seminar and I believe, I've got all the materials with me. I don't know if anyone shared them with anyone else, the legislative update. The demographic update was online at the MSBA, so anybody can log in and get it. And again, like, like was said, we are an aging state. So we desperately need more people in the state and more eligible workforce in the state, particularly for some key areas. Then, you know, they gave a whole bunch of updates, including for the Avid program, which made me very proud to hear what was going on at Roseville and, and the ideas that they had. So it was overall a very educational day. I appreciate the opportunity to be able to attend.
Enrique?
Nothing for me.
I also was at the Summer Seminar and I think the highlight for me was, the demographer was great. And the, the production or the, not production. The documentary, thank you for the word. For Lucy Laney was amazing, something that I hope you all have an opportunity to see. Because, and it was a little bit of a tearjerker for sure, so very good. And I enjoyed all of the speakers as well, but I won't repeat all that. I did want to report back though that earlier this summer, the board had a retreat and we made some changes, had some really good discussion. We've adjusted the agenda a little bit. You may notice that the open forum is now part of the meeting. And we've continued to have the full financial statements included in the consent agenda. Public engagement, we'll be meeting to look at some of the things we discussed with our goals. And some of that had to do with increasing school board visibility in the community and in the schools. And we'll hope that a lot of our principals will help us with that and let us know what's going on. And, you know, we'll try and be there. Also, communication and education and education in, in informing the public of what the role of the school board member is. There's, there's a lot to be said about what, what we do and what we don't do and what our role is. And that's an important part. And then also, as a school board, we did a self-evaluation that was offered through MSBA. And the contact at MSBA was very impressed with all of us because we did it so quickly and responded faster than anyone, any board ever has. So I don't know if that's a good or a bad thing for us, but she was impressed with, you know, how, how well we did with, with our response, responsiveness. And we will be reviewing that at a future retreat coming up. And then with that, I'll go into future events.
Lee? I, I just wanted to make the comment that Lucy Laney is airing, I think, on September 12th. Is it on Channel 5?
Carol 11.
Carol 11.
I think it's Carol 11.
Yeah, it will be open airing for the public, so.
Okay. Future events, all staff, welcome back, will be August 26th. There's a 7:15 a.m. breakfast at the high school with an 8 a.m. program. And then we'll be going on a tour of the facilities that Jim mentioned around 10:15 that day. Next school board study session is August 26th. That will be a busy day, 6 o'clock. The first day of school for 9:12 only is August 27th. First day of school for 6:08 only is September 3rd. Assessment dates, September 3rd and 4th for grades one through five. And the first day of school for E5 only is September 5th. So we've got a lot of different dates going, so caution the parents to pay attention to the dates. And with that, we're going to adjourn and go into closed session. So do I have a motion to go into closed session, I guess?
So moved.
Stacy, second.
Second.
By Enrique. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That motion carries 7-0. Thank you.